For the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, to Monday, May 18th. If you have any questions, concerns, or things on your mind, come up to the microphone, give us your name and address, and then state your business with this body, please. Just for the roll call, please.
Cedar?
Here.
Foley?
Here.
Kinsfatter?
Here.
Kappa?
Here.
McCourt?
Here.
McCartney?
Here.
All present, Your Honor.
I think we'll go to the consent agenda. Number four, A City Council, minutes of May 4th, 2015, regular meeting, recommendation approved. B is the Cemetery Board of Trustees, minutes of November 18th, 2014, meeting, recommendation received. And C, St. Clair Historical Commission, minutes, April 9th, 2015, recommendation received.
Motion to approve A through C as presented, Your Honor.
Support.
Most may support questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're going to number five and open the public hearing for the 2015-16 annual budget. Mr. Booth?
Good evening, and welcome to the 2015-16 public hearing for the city-St. Clair budget. Looks like we have a lot more in the audience this year, so the word must be getting out. It's as good as I can do on my accountant, so. All right. Got a number of slides that we go through, and I do have handout back on the stand here if anyone did not get one and would like to. It may help with some of the slides as they are a little difficult to read in some cases. However, if you want to move up front, you might be able to see them a little bit better. I'll start out with the historical tax values from 2005 through 2015. And taking a quick look at it and see where we've been and kind of where we're... This is the first year we've had a positive uptick since 2007. Between 2005 and 15, the taxable value decreased 16.2 percent. And then if you take a look from 2007 and compare that to 2015, the taxable value decreased 23.5 percent. Quite big numbers if you looked at it, you know. If you had a household and you had almost 25 percent less revenue, it's quite a hit. This is one of those slides that is a bit difficult, so you may want to look at your handout. There's three things I'd like to kind of point out. Like to start with property tax revenue. You'll see a column, second column from the right where it says "The Change", and you'll see the property tax revenue for the year for the general fund is up $62,267. Moving back over to the far-left column, you'll see just about to the bottom, street debt is $2.4902 mils. And that's that piece of... It's for a piece of debt that we have for streets that will mature in November of '16. And then the final piece I'll point out is the pension rate below that at one mil. That one mil expires in 2020. Figuring we'd have a little bit of a... We'd have some graphs here. Got a couple items here on this I'd like to point out. First of all, tax revenue to the general fund is... Excuse me, total revenue to the general fund is $3,554,424. It's a 1.6 percent increase over the prior year's budget. And you can see... Whoop, sorry. You can see the biggest piece here is from property taxes. It's 70 percent. Followed by state shared revenue at $488,000. Again, most of it comes from property taxes. Okay. Moving on to expenditures for the... Again, this is just the general fund. A little bit difficult to read, so you may want to look at your handout. I've got a couple items I'd like to point out. Total expenditures, as with revenues, it's a balanced budget, so there'll be $3,554,424. And then the largest expenditure within the general fund is for police services at $849,394. At 24 percent. Now, if anybody has questions on what makes up some of the other buckets? For example, streets and public maintenance, if you were to look at the budget, that's a combination of major and local street transfers from the general, public works, streetlights, which cost $125,000 a year, and public improvements.
Mike, for the police on expenditures, that $800,000, does that include health insurance and pension, or is that...
Health, actually, is if. If you look at the... Kind of right straight across in police right here is fringe benefits. That would be the healthcare for anyone that's in the general fund, so that would be the police department retirees as well. So, no, it's not included in the police.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
What's the difference between general administration and city general?
General admin, good question. General admin is city council through treasurer, if you're looking at the general fund budget, which would include the... Again, city council, the assessor, accounting superintendent. There may be one other, one or two I'm missing, but basically that's your general. Then the other is a... The city general covers... There's one bucket, our office help, front desk. And then postage, water, sewer, electric for this facility. So it'd be... Basically, that's account for Department 101, 900.
Okay. Does that seem high to anybody else but me?
Which one?
City general.
It's got your general liability in there too, Tom. There's some big numbers.
Okay, all right.
No, I mean, it does, but...
Okay.
Let me... Since we're here, might as well hit it. Contractual services, so smooth mowing. Some of that kind of stuff. General liabilities, $63,000.
Okay.
We pay property taxes on the industrial park. That's fine. Stuff like that's all in there.
I don't know that I remember seeing it broken out like that on prior previous budgets. So, thank you.
Yep. Any others? Audience? Anytime, too, after you look at this, if you have questions, feel free to give me a call. All right, then I wanted to make sure I pointed out a few notes on the... I'll start with the general fund revenues. Overall revenues increased $54,300. I'd mentioned that property taxes earlier went up $62,000. State shared revenue went up $13,100. And then there's just a grouping that makes up the other $20,800 that was a decrease. Expense increases were also $54,300. Fringe benefits increased 67,200, and again, that's healthcare primarily. And there's other... Just a mixture of small amounts that make up $12,900 for a decrease of expenses. Moving from the general fund over to major streets. Major street revenues are projected to increase $29,000, driven by property tax increase of $15,200. Again, I mentioned earlier that that's to cover the street debt that we issued in 2006. Cash balance for major streets at September 30 of '14, our most recent audit was $282,000. And then I threw in there, just for reference, September 13 was $33,600, and September of '12, we only had $13,300. So, we're adding a little bit, so when we start doing some of this work with the scrap tire grants and those types of things, the crack sealers will have the funds to cover it. Moving on to local streets. Revenues are projected to increase $72,000. Again, driven by a shared gas tax increase of $63,000. And then the cash balance at September '14 was $200,000, well over $200,000. September 13 was $133,400, and September '12 was $43,900. So, again, we're starting to add a little bit there, and those funds will be used, again, with some of the work that we have going. And some of it actually will have been spent because that cash at September of '14, we did do the... Some of the asphalt patchwork around town, that was done in November of '14, which was $48,100. And that was done on various streets around town. Recreation, revenues are flat at $207,800, and expenses are down $26,800. Most of that's within contractual. Some programming that was no longer offered. DDA Fund 248. The 2014-15 budget, which we're currently in, called for principal payment on the Clinton Avenue Street Scape project for $3,660, as there's no fund balance at 9/30/14. There will be no payment. The balance for that project, I guess if they were to start collecting funds again, would be a repayment back to the major street fund of $64,200.
I have a question on the DDA balance. I can't formulate it. It's a confusing issue. Is DDA... Is it dormant? Are we keeping it alive because there's a $64,000 debt out there that we want to capture in the event that they... There was the DDA district started to see an increase in tax revenue? Is this a good time to talk about that, or should we... Is that another time?
Can you answer a little bit? Jim, the technical term was... Is it considered dormant? I mean, it's...
I don't think that it would be correctly characterized as dormant. It continues to exist, but the tax capture aspect has been terminated. So, essentially, its budget is dependent on maybe grants that it applies for, donations that are made. There can be various sources of funding, but the principal one is tax capture, which it no longer has. So, it's essentially, you know, more of it at this point without any money to develop projects with.
With the potential for Clinton Avenue development and the incoming back alive, then would they capture tax then, or no? If it's... It's new on... I don't remember how it...
They would have to reinstitute the tax capture, and there are some procedural hurdles to that. We'd have to get back in touch with some of the entities that partner with the city. It's... The county, I think, is one of the entities. I'm not sure. There's a couple different constituencies that have to allow for that to happen. But we'd have to start back at square one if and when that determination's made.
So, that appraisal we made, and that's where the tax is set, and anything above that that happens in the district is collected by the DDA?
If and when that were to be resuscitated, yes.
Okay.
So, it'd take actions from several municipal entities or governmental entities to resurrect that process?
Yes.
So, right now, there's no tax capture. And the only way, even if the businesses came back and the downtown district overnight was like it was 10 years ago, it would still take an action from this body and other local entities to resurrect the DDA. So, in essence...
Resurrect that...
Resurrect that tax capture.
Yes.
So, then, the decision could be made to create a TIF for that district if that was the direction of council. So, the money would stay within the city budget?
Correct.
Okay. So, thank you.
Let me move on to the pension fund, Fund 295. This fund is in a negative position. The 9/30/14 balance was a negative $94,300. Once our budgeting is complete, I plan to file a death's elimination plan with the state of Michigan. My proposal to the state will call for reestablishment of a positive fund balance over a three-year period. And that gets reported by the auditors to the state when we do this, so they're aware of it. Golf course, Fund 584. This fund's deficit was eliminated during the 2013-14 fiscal year. Fund had a positive cash balance at September 30 of '14 in the amount of $19,800. During the current year that we're in now, the general fund will be refunded $7,500. At the end of this year, the remaining balance due back to the general fund from the golf course would be $176,500. So, they do have some work to do, but, again, it's positive, and, you know, I'm not taking all their cash with the $7,500. So, I think we're...
We're going in the right direction.
We're heading in the right direction, for sure.
Do we... They... We had to eliminate that debt by state statute, didn't we?
Yes. Same as with the pension fund, they'll allow you to do it over a period of time. And I believe when I started here in 2006, it was in a deficit position, so it took some time to get it out, get the structure set where it needed to be, and, again, Mr... Like you said before, Mr. Bees doing a nice job. Waste water fund. Cash balance at September 30 of 2014 was $1,269,500. During the current year, I'd like to replace... There's a lift station on M29. It's a cost of about $50,000. The HVAC system, which actually had a call today on it, the AC is not working. Requires replacement. SRF sewer line project is complete, other than, I believe, there's two driveways that need to be... Approaches that need to be poured by TR Piper's Act. And within the next 30 to 60 days, it should be closed out. There is no millage for sewer debt. All remaining debt is tied to fees charged for water services. And no changes are planned to sewer rates for the upcoming budget cycle. This is one fund that we'd all be excited about.
Just one question, Mike. Are you going forward, then? If I can call it number line two and line three? I mean, you don't really need anything from us on that, other than to get bids, right?
We'll have to do sealed bids because they're going to be over the amounts, and I'll have to come forward to you, yeah. Talked to Jeff today about the AC. He reached out and guessed a little warm down there in the...
But you are seeking it. It's on your list.
Yes. The lift station probably should have been done a year or two ago.
Yeah.
If not longer.
I think we already got quotes on that, didn't we?
Yeah, at least once.
Yeah.
I think what we're going to do is we're going to go with one similar to Spring Street, but we may actually just rebuild the one we have with new pumps, refurb it. Water fund. And this fund was in a deficit at 9/30 of 2012. The cash at 9/30 of '14 was $204,800. Just to... So, you have a reference point. September of '11, we had $4. It's not 4K. Pretty amazing for a fund that size. During the current year, I'd like to replace electrical panels. Keith is in the process of getting some quotes. There's three panels that are rusting out, need to be replaced. I guess the moisture and the chlorine don't work well with that kind of stuff. Going forward, we need to further increase the fund's cash balance. This will enable us to replace some of our aging infrastructure. And I'm sure I put these up here before, but Golf Street, Jay, Waterloo, and then near the city's water plant, there's a line there that needs to be replaced. The last cost I have for that was $635,000, so... I know last year we bumped it 2 percent. I'm going to come in with 2 percent bump again. And again, I don't think that'll get us quite where we need to be, but it's going to start moving us in the right direction, so... It'd be nice to get a cash balancer, so we can start doing some work like we do with the wastewater fund and have the funds, and we're not out borrowing it, paying interest, and we could actually use our own funds to make those repairs. And I haven't set on the two, but I think that's realistic. Moving on to the harbor. Cash balance at September 30 of '14 is $147,000. Personal watercraft project is filed with the DEQ and Army Corps. Expiration date was May 10. I received a letter today indicating that we have two comments from the Army Corps as far as the permit goes. I've already taken and forwarded that to Row to see if they can help me with the issue. And my goal is by the end of May to have those done, but we'll see.
Good luck.
What is the issue? Two people filed them. One was the Army Corps, and the other one was Malcolm Marine. And it's the... Has to do with the... Them sticking too far out into the water. So, the guy from the Army Corps suggested maybe we can move them further east and maybe enter from the... Have the ramp on the opposite side. I haven't been down to see if that'll work. I don't know if it's a possibility, but he thought maybe you could move them up closer to the shore.
They're already against the seawall.
Yeah, no. But does that stick out further than the wall? Or the shoreline? You know where anywhere goes. Because I don't think it's much that's...
At the end of the wall, between B was the end of the wall?
Yeah, Second Street there, right? So...
Yeah, but you got utilities in there, so you have to drive piping for stability, so I don't think that's going to work.
May not work.
You know, we did that measuring when I was still on Harbor Commission, and a 13 and a half-foot boat didn't stick out any farther than what we thought those personal watercrafts would. And obviously, it wasn't on the radar then, so now that it is, it's not being looked at, so...
That was what I told the Army Corps. The gentleman spoke to it today, and he said the difference is the boat can be moved easily.
Yeah.
And... Didn't have a comment, but similar. And I said, "Well, they are movable. They aren't going to be in the water, for example, but..."
Okay.
I'll keep you updated on that one. Kind of pushing as hard as I can on it. Okay. Few comments. Retirements, this one I'd like to point out. City staff in total has really done a nice job of working with me to make sure we hit budget numbers. In regards to retirements, during the past several years, costs associated with retirements have been covered by then-current year budgets. We didn't... I guess what I'm saying is we didn't go over when we paid off sick time and things like that. We'd delay hiring somebody or, you know, whatever we needed to do in that regard, so... In consideration of the general fund, we had people leave from the admin staff and from the police staff. And, again, we hit our budget numbers, which is a compliment to the staff. And then I'd like to point out two other numbers in our recent audited financials. They are not included in your handout. One is on page 34, so if you want to make a note of that, if you want a copy, I'll get it to you. Or you can go online. It's online as well. Under retirement plan, you'll see that the city's funding ratio is 66 percent. This is a reduction of 2 percent from the previous year. And then I just give it an example here. Moving the funding to 80 percent from 66, and again, holding all other things constant, would require a contribution of $2.6 million. So, quite a large number.
Those are obligations that we're committed to, right?
Those are current... The current value of the liabilities we have, I guess. And then on page 36, this is for other post-employment benefits, which is essentially retiree healthcare. You'll see on that, in the audit, they reported as a rate of 0 percent funded. And that's essentially because we do not have a trust fund set up. We push the money aside. What we're doing is, when people retire, we're paying for operating cash flow. However, again, if you look at the audit on page 38, you'll see that I have reserved, or we have set aside, $888,679, which is 22.5 percent funding rate. Again, work is needed to address both of these funding needs. And that's all I have for this evening. Any questions?
Yes, sir. Come up to the microphone, please.
General fund, what's the cash balance in that?
Cash balance in the general fund?
Not on the paper.
Off the top of my head, I have to look it up though.
3. something, wasn't it?
Not cash balance. $1,346 is the cash.
All right. The other one's a 2 percent rate in the water rate. Is that just on the commodity end of it, or...
I think that's what we did last year.
Because not on readiness to serve, not on administration fee?
To give you a final answer, Bill, I'll... At our public... Or, excuse me, when we do the budget, we accept it, I'll have it all detailed out, and I'll give a breakdown of what the rate is currently and what it's going to be.
At 2 percent, does that include what we sell to the township?
Pardon me?
Township getting a 2 percent increase?
However, the contract's set up. If you want to come and look at it, I'll show you. Again, I don't... Off the top of my head, I...
And what about the unmetered water that we sell? Is that going up, too?
Yes. Absolutely.
We still sell a lot of unmetered water? Speaking of that question.
I asked for a tally on the total. I haven't seen it yet, but... So, I'm curious as to how much we have.
Probably put meters most places where outside people are.
We take them all, right?
Anybody else? All right, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Good job, Mr. Booth. Rule number six, ordinance resolution A, ordinance introduction, amendment to Chapter 50, Article 1, Section 1, Subsection A and B, no removal.
Katie, do you mind? Let's be a question. You know there's going to be a question.
Are we introducing the ordinance, or are we moving to approve the ordinance?
This is an introduction.
Introduction?
Yes.
I don't have a problem. I'd move to introduce.
I would support that.
All right, the motion's made and supported to introduce the snow ordinance. There's any questions? Call the roll, please.
Kappa?
Yes.
McCourt?
Yes.
McCartney?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Kinsfatter?
Yes.
Cedar?
Yes.
Carrie, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. All right, let's go to number seven, Port Administration. Mr. Booth?
All right, I have several items this evening. I'd like to start with a notice to the public that Pine River Bridge, starting June 1st and ending June 7th, two lanes on the Pine River Bridge will be closed for replacement of an epoxy overlay. This is a final step in the rehab of the bridge. There will be no detours. One lane will remain open in each direction. The construction will be guided by flagging operations, so I'm sure it will be an inconvenience, but not nearly as much as when it was shut down. So, again, June 1st through the 7th. And they had to wait till now because they could not put that down when it was pulled out. Okay. Next item, I know Mr. Kleeman had some questions on Oak Street. He's had them for quite some time. I'm working with Brent Warren, the DPW of the DPW, to get costs together to perform the needed ditch work on Oak Street, so that'll be coming to you soon. We did get some pricing last year from the county to do it. We're going to get the county, and then we'll get two additional from local contractors.
Is that just cleaning? You're just looking at cleaning the ditches?
Well, the ditch needs to be... I think there needs to be a ditch in the one section. And then, obviously, the road needs to be... I'm sure needs some stoner.
Is that something that our DPW services can do?
Yeah. The quote we got last year was some of it being done by the road commission and some of it being done by us. That's the ditch work. Sturgeon Festival, we have up here on the left, we have a... Public's right, a flyer on the Sturgeon Festival. Anyone that's gone, I don't know anyone here, or I have not, but I know they seem to be getting a really good turnout. Just like to make everyone aware that it is going... Or will be held Saturday, May 30th, from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Maritime Center in Port Huron. You can... If you look at the flyer there, they've got a website, sturgeonfestival.com, and I think Annette also has it on our city website, the link. Not pushing it, but I do go to a watershed meeting once a month, and it's... St. Clair County Health Department puts it on, and they're at the meeting, so... Say they have a really good turnout. You actually have sturgeon there that you can see. I think they said you can touch them. That interest anyone? Final item, crack sealing equipment. I have completed the bid spec sheet. I have a copy of it here tonight if anyone wants to look at it. That was done, it's supposed to go on our website, and one vendor has been contacted. I'll get the other two contacted as well this week. Sealed bids will be received until 4:00 p.m. on May 20. sealed bids will be received until 4 p.m. on May 28.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mike.
Great, thank you.
I got one question, though.
Yes, sir.
The bridge, Mike, are they going to arrange the lights to work favorably, the traffic light?
Oh, you mean to fix it, like it was?
I, we've asked, I haven't-
I mean, if it's one lane going both ways, it's going to-
I think you'd need more length on the M-29, north and south.
Yeah, it's going to be tied up forever.
From what Mike reported, they were using flag people.
They're having people out there. So they won't, the lights will be disabled?
I don't know how that's going to work.
Will they go to flashing?
I understand that they're going to try to use flag people.
And then go to flashing lights?
They're going to force a law, they, they have them general, we, let them know we fill with flashing lights, flag people, I understand that they're going to use the flag people to see, okay, if you're done here, force a law.
Anyway, have you checked in to see if they're going to do flashing lights?
I can check and see what they're doing, I mean, obviously, they worked with us last time, a little bit slow, but, they worked with us.
That's a problem, they'll work with it.
That's good to stay on the good side of them.
But by the time they call us back, it'll be done?
Essentially, it's the first full week of June, so, Monday through Saturday, or Sunday.
Anybody else? Wait, we'll go to B, Mr. Downey, have anything tonight?
Nothing this evening, your honor.
All right, any city departments out here tonight, anything? DQs, authorities, boards, commissions, council reps?
Your honor, I do, as a committee member for the Fallen Heroes Memorial Fund, I do have some announcements to make, if I could indulge your patience, as you, as everyone knows in the audience at home, for the last several years, we've been working on the Fallen Heroes Memorial Statue, which is honoring the former Chief of Police John McDonald, that was killed in the line of duty in 1962. I'm here to proudly announce that this project is coming to fruition, it's coming to an end, a lot of progress has been made, today, we escorted the statue from the city of Port Huron to St. Clair, we had 14 members of the Blue Knights Motorcycle Organization, which is made up of retired police officers, and veterans from various wars, including retired police officers from Canada, the OPP, the escort was also accompanied by the Port Huron Police Department, picked up by Marysville, and then again, by our own police officers at the city limits, and then escorted down to the, to the location in front of the senior housing on M-29. It was a real proud and somber moment, and I think that we had a lot of people there, and I was surprised, a lot of traffic stopped, pulled off the side of the road, and let the procession follow through, and I don't think anybody knew what it was, but it was just, it was just a nice day. Originally, we had decided to have the dedication and unveiling on June 6, but today, with discussion with the McDonald family, we've moved that to Memorial Day, May 25, where we will have the unveiling and dedication immediately following the Memorial Day Parade, and the American Legion's normal ceremonies, so I'm thinking maybe 2 o'clock, John, is that kind of, I don't know what time the parade starts, Mayor, is it noon or 1 o'clock?
Starts at 1, usually by 2 it wraps up.
So, we're, we're getting the word out via social media, which is Facebook, the St. Clair website, the You Know You're From St. Clair If type of social media, I requested, and Annette's helped me out with sending notifications out to Mr. Block from The Voice and The Times Herald, I'm probably going to contact Paul Miller tomorrow from some Port Huron radio stations, and ask them to, if they would make an announcement, the more the word gets out, the more people that we would have there. One of the things that I came to realize over the last couple of days, now that this thing's winding down, is that since this project started, we've lost probably a whole generation, or pretty much a whole generation, that knew Chief McDonald, that served for Chief McDonald, that was friends with him, or family members, and I'm hoping that those, that generation that's left, the Mary Boadads of the world, and John's aunts and uncles and cousins, that they pass the word and get the people that knew him from St. Clair and the surrounding areas to participate in this event. So, anyway, I wanted to give a big thank you to the police departments, the police agencies, Chief Jefferson, for helping me coordinate, and the Blue Knights were just, what a touch that was, so, that's kind of the good thing that I wanted to bring to council and the audience. The, one of the other issues that I wanted to make sure that somebody addresses with the senior housing, is that their lawn care, their weed control, and the cleanup after their, I don't know if we have any authority over that, but I think publicly mentioning it, hopefully that they get, they'll do something about it, but it's just a mess, I was embarrassed to even look at it today, so hopefully, something could be said to them, or-
Well, they started trimming today, and I have to go down there tomorrow for some other things, and I'll talk to them later.
So, stay tuned, Paul Dingman's been kind enough to allow us on Channel 6 on Thursday at 3:30 to talk about the dedication and unveiling, there's been two local photographers, Dana, she does a little league, Dana Burke, and a friend of hers was kind enough to follow the procession down from Port Huron, and take probably 100-plus still shots of the procession, that loop will run on Channel 6 from Thursday through Memorial Day, and probably the week after, so everyone will get a chance to see the procession, probably a sneak preview of the statue, we kind of uncovered it, took a peek at it today, but we're all pretty excited about it, and I want to give a big thanks to everybody that's been patient, and spent the time, or donated the money, and donated the time to make the site what it is today, so, thanks, Mayor.
Anybody else? All right, number eight, we have no unfinished business, we'll go to number nine, new business, A, approve appointment of Ward 3 council member, as everyone is sadly aware, and the Krebs has passed on, and we have a vacancy, we had a couple interviews tonight, at this time, I'm going to entertain a motion for the replacement of Ward 3 council member.
I'll make motion to appoint Bill Kleeman.
I'll move, I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and supported to appoint William Kleeman in the 3rd ward, are any questions? Call the roll, please.
Report?
Yes.
McCartney?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Kinzpatrick?
Yes.
Kappa?
Yes.
Cedar?
Yes.
Carrie, your honor.
All right, at this time, Mr. Kleeman, I'm going to have you come up here and take the oath and join this body at this meeting, and start swimming with us.
Start swimming. Your honor, I know you're sharkting.
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of this state, and the Charter of the City of St. Clair, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of council member 3rd ward, in and for the City of St. Clair, County of St. Clair, and State of Michigan, according to the best of my abilities.
Thank you. I want to thank both applicants, Mr. Wade and Mr. Kleeman, we felt we couldn't go wrong with either. All right, let's go to B, approve appointment to Golf Commission, I have a recommendation to the Golf Commission to appoint Rick Schwafer from Melgam Circle to fill a vacancy with term expression of December 31, 2017, Mr. Kinzpatrick, do you have anything to add to this?
We were fortunate, we had three people that interviewed, Mr. Kleeman was actually one of them, and, I mean, it was unanimous, Rick actually worked for a landscape company that actually did a lot of work down there, and he's an avid golfer, and they felt we're good with that appointment, so.
I'd move to approve the application.
Support.
Most of the may support, questions? If you would favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Go to C, approve permit application for annual 4th of July fireworks display.
Your honor, this is merely the application for the permit, and then there'll be other paperwork come later.
So, should we table the vote, or just, can we vote?
Oh, we need a motion, yes, a motion to authorize the application.
All support.
All right, the motions have been made and supported to approve the permitted application for the 4th of July fireworks, questions? If you would favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll go to number 10, claims and accounts, May 8, May 15, 2015.
Hearing, no questions, your honor, I make a motion to approve as presented.
All support.
Questions? If you would favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Go to number 11, public questions and comments, anybody have anything tonight? Your second.
Mary Boadad, 1170 South 12, thanks again to the city for cooperation, our 14th annual Marble Eye Wall Eye Tournament was a success again, eight pounds four ounces, Nathan Woolley from Port Huron won the $500, and thank you to people like Tom, Mitch, and Mike, who donate prizes for us, so we had lots of prizes for people, and a lot of people buy a ticket just to win a prize, and we get fishermen from Florida, the Upper Peninsula, the west side of the state, they come from all over, they love St. Clair, thanks again.
Thank you, you've got to do good work.
Thank you.
The balance.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Davis, from 139 Murphy Drive, St. Clair Township, thanks for letting me come and speak today.
What's your address again?
139 Murphy Drive, I live next to the big Sunoco Tank Farm and Umbridge Pipeline we've had issues with. For me to come today, I wanted to address everybody, to let you guys know that right now, in the House Oversight Committee, there is a bill called HB 4540, which they want to amend our Michigan FOIA rights, if they do this, it will take our rights as citizens, appearance-wise, away, under the disguise of cyber attacks and infrastructure, the Michigan FOIA Act already covers that, along with the Federal Information Act, so we have plenty of protection, and I don't know any terrorist is going to FOIA, it's usually the residents, they need the help to get the information to protect themselves. I have brought lots of information, I brought the bill and everything, so if you'd like to see it, I'd be more than happy, yep, sorry, I'm really nervous, this affects everybody in the state of Michigan, if you have a pipeline running through your house, it's every energy instruction, DT, anything, so if we can get support on this, and email them, talk to them, tell them no, because we all need our rights, we all deserve to have clean air, clean land, and a right to know what's running through that, thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. All right, anybody else? Go to number 12, Mayor Council comments, I do have a couple of things, number one, certainly, the Memorial Day Parade next Monday, 1 o'clock, right after that, Fallen Heroes dedication, also, I want to take a minute and thank Thrice Hawkins and Dan Lockwood and Bill McDonald and Steve Grates, Bill McDonald Ford stepped up and refurbished our bike racks at the library in Palmer Park, they look great, and we just want to thank those people, and certainly our DPW for the work that they did on that. Does anybody else have anything?
I have one thing, your honor, this Sunday is junior football registration from 1 to 3 in the sports bar, if the parents of the players are unable to come and register, they can do it online also, at www.juniorfootball.com.
Thank you.
Memorial Weekend, Woodbat, Derek Kaufman, Memorial Woodbat Tournament, out at St. Clair Little League, starts Friday night, Saturday, finals are on Sunday, I've been told there's in excess of 60 teams this year, the tournament has basically just kind of exploded, it's, there's teams from all over the state and Canada, and basically, if no one's ever gone out there and watched, it's kids actually using wood bats instead of aluminum for the whole tournament, it's a lot of fun, it's a 3-2 pitch, so the games are relatively quick, and it's fun.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, Bill, I'd like to thank you and the rest of the council for your support, and I'm going to do my best, like you guys proud of me, I guess.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to go to number 13, we're going to ask for a closed session request to discuss the strategy connected with the negotiation of a collective bargain agreement with employees represented by the Police Officers Labor Council.
So moved.
All right, I got the motions made and supported, call the roll, please.
McCartney?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Kinzpatrick?
Yes.
Report?
Yes.
Kleeman?
Yes.
Cedar?
Yes.
Carrie.
All right, you are welcome to stay, we will not be taking any action when we return. Have a good Memorial Day, a safe Memorial Day, careful going home.